I will call the Wednesday, October ninth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Essex Junction City Council to order. Are there any agenda additions or changes?
Not for me.
Not for me either? No, seeing none? We'll move on to public to be heard. This is a portion of the meeting where members of the public can bring questions, comments, concerns to the board. These can be items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. And we have one guest in the room. I'll see if there's anything they'd like to say. No, there's not. So going to Zoom. If there's anyone out there that would like to share anything, please raise your hand in Zoom or otherwise unmute. I'm not seeing anybody do that. Give it another second. All right, I guess we'll move on to the first business item, five A, discussion of police community advisory board applicant.
So, we do have an applicant. Because of their schedule, they would never be able to come to a council meeting for an interview because...
One second. It's all right. We're gonna pause for an issue with you.
Zoom was mistakenly muted earlier, so it's possible that anyone on Zoom may not have heard your call for public.
Oh, we can start over. Was it for the whole thing?
Uh, for the entire thing, yeah.
Okay, we'll start over. Okay.
With more pizzazz this time.
There's no car, there are no car alarms. For, for the recording, I'm gonna start the meeting over because we had some technical difficulties. I'll call the Wednesday, October ninth, two thousand twenty-four meeting in the Essex Junction City Council to order. My understanding are there are no agenda additions or changes, so we'll move right on to public to be heard. Is there anyone in the room that has a comment, concern, or question for the board at this point? Doesn't appear so. Is anyone on Zoom that, uh, going back to Zoom, if there's someone, resemerron?
Since you started the meeting over, I had to say something.
You didn't.
I'm wondering if the decision has been made about the CVE, uh, additional noise ordinance requests.
Not yet.
Thank you.
Sure. Is there anyone else? It doesn't appear so, so we will move on to the first business item, discussion of police community advisory board applicant.
Okay, so you've got an applicant for the community, police community advisory board. Because of their schedule, they will never be able to come to a regularly scheduled council meeting. So, um, the suggestion was to potentially have two of you, if you're so willing, have a conversation with this individual and then make a recommendation back to the full council. Their, uh, application is included in here, so you can see it. Um, it's, it's pretty brief, so I think a conversation probably would be helpful.
Great. So essentially, we need two volunteers to...
I'm happy to do that.
Great. Marcus?
I can join in.
Okay.
We can figure it out.
Okay.
Figure something that works.
That's great.
Awesome. Cool. So we will, um, get you connected.
Sounds excellent. Thank you.
All right, well, that was brief and perfect. Move on to, move on to five B. We're gonna take that as an example. Moving on to five B, presentation of the police community advisory board, um, a brief to the council.
So Christina is here? Yes, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You're welcome. After I went to eighty-one Maine, I, I, I was halfway to eighty-one Maine, and then it was like, no, P-Cab, but different building. The chief is just walking in behind you too, just.
Oh, great. We can probably pull up another chair there. Welcome. Thanks for joining us. Just in time.
Chief, if you don't mind, if you are, if you are gonna go, you're just going to New York.
Great.
We got this.
If you don't mind, just introduce yourself for the, for the folks at home in the recording.
Okay, um, I'm Christina Hagistad. I'm the chair of the police community advisory board.
Great, thank you.
So I just had a couple of updates in no particular order as to what we've been doing. The first thing is, we, well, first applicant was, I'm glad that I heard that discussion. We, um, would really like more members. I know that a lot of applicants haven't been from the city and we're trying to have representation from both. So that'd be great to have another person on with us. Um, the first thing we've been working on is, uh, brainstorming ways to come to more city and town events. We're trying to figure out ways to remain independent from the police department so that we're kind of gaining community trust that you can talk to us and we're not gonna necessarily, you know, reveal your identity, things like that, to the police department. So we're trying to get somebody to multiple events, but it's hard because a lot of us are either double booked or we weren't personally, we were unavailable personally, regardless of P-Cab. So working on outreach at events, working on things, maybe we could hand out, um, we have a flyer, but we're trying to think of maybe like cards or, I mean, I thought of a different idea and we're, we're just trying to brainstorm what we could do. Another thing is, we are doing well with this. We're working on our blog posts on the P-Cab link on the website. Um, the vice chair, Gwendolyn, has been interviewing some of us, um, writing up some summaries as to what we've been doing, so that's been great, but then we're trying to brainstorm ways to publicize our blog posts without necessarily being from Essex, excuse me, Essex Police to find that gray line of like, we're kind of connected, but we want to make sure you know that we're not a hundred percent connected so that you can talk to us. And then I've had some email issues as taking over being the chair, so I'm working on that to then reach out to some like media, so that we can get our name more publicized, because with only a handful of members, there's four of us. We are reaching out to people, community organizations that we're a part of. And some people are reaching out to us because they just know us and they know that we're on the, uh, committee, but it's hard with just four people, even if we all reach out to who we know. It's, it's tough, so we're trying to brainstorm ways while still remaining separate. We've been going through some new policies or just existing policies from the police department and giving our feedback. And we're working on an update to a survey that was put out a couple of years ago, um, just to gauge the community's, um, current feelings about the police department and what they've been doing. So we've been brainstorming questions and rewording and seeing like what data do we want to get from the survey and then working backwards so that we can adjust the survey that was given out and then think of what can we do to get not just like multiple new people to do the survey, but the people who are gonna give us also the answers that we want. Like, we want data, so we don't just want, you know, everyone here to do it. Cool, but maybe we all haven't had interactions with the police that warrant P-Cab, you know, intervention. So we, we meet once a month still. So in between those meetings, we all kind of do a little work and then come back, um, the next month and report, and so sometimes things take maybe two meetings, two or three meetings to finish a topic, um, which is why things have been moving a little slow, but quality-wise, because we've really had to start from nothing to, I mean, we had the Essex Fest, but we had to start as a group and kind of form relationships with each other. Now we're kind of on, you know, really like friendly kind of terms, but it, it's hard when you're all
Yeah.
starting something fresh. Um, and then what we need, I wrote more members, was really what, it's just, because if one person's absent, one person's on Zoom, there's two in the room who are, and it's just, it's not...
Right.
It's, it's great. I mean, everyone tries to come when they can, even if it's on Zoom, but we just need, we need more just bodies. So that's, that's everything I have. Not sure if you wanted to add anything?
Uh, I'm here to support you.
Okay, if I forgot something maybe that you've, that you know that we're doing.
I would just, you know, say thank you to, to the members who have stuck it, stuck in there with us. It's, I would say that it's been, it's been difficult because of the inconsistent consistency that we've had with people coming in, you know, we immediately lost one member the very first, after the first meeting. You know, now we, we lost our, our liaison who was, who was doing all of this for the police department.
We lost our second member after maybe the second meeting.
Right, we lost our second member after the second meeting, and then we've had, uh, you know, others come in, Vince just joined us or whatever a little while ago, and now he's had some issues with some family issues at home, so he hasn't been able to be consistent, but... So that's, that's been the hard thing, is just having a consistent body of people to actually do the work, um, and get the message going and get the things going and, and forming the group, like you said, was, it was a little bit difficult, you know, there's that forming period that goes through with everybody getting comfortable with each other. Um, and I think we're now, we're in a good spot. We do have some task lists that we've been working on, um, that the, the board gets them up with and that they want to work on, the primary one being that survey. Um, and that was, uh, a request that, that I made, uh, because in two thousand twenty, we did a, we did a survey as to what public safety looked like in this, in the city and in the town. And, and those folks that I see nodding your head, you remember that survey, you know, we would like to redo something now that we're four years down the road from there and see where we're at. See what we've done right and what we need to continue working on, you know, so that's, that's been a bit of a, a bit of a project, and I think, I suspect it's gonna be now for a little bit, so. But it, that's been the biggest thing, is just the consistency of having people that are there and involved in it, and, and like, like she said, having four members has been pretty tough. With one person goes on vacation, so now you only have three members. We, we even had one meeting with two members, so it was pretty hard.
So, you know, it does make me wonder, because, you know, I look on social media and we see these long drawn-out conversations around things like, I'm not gonna name any particular roads, neighborhood issues that are going on.
Right.
And I'm getting to the point now with like finding members that I sort of want to kind of privately reach out to some of these folks that are vocal and say, you know, there's an opportunity here for you, you know, to, to kind of, you know, use some of this energy to, to really learn, you know, and, and then contribute, but I don't, I've been hesitant because it sort of feels like an odd
Yeah, absolutely.
odd backdoor way to, to get somebody to do something, but, but at the same time, it feels like, it feels like, you know, there's a lot of people that have a lot of concerns and they're very repetitive, repeatedly vocal, which is fine, I'm not criticizing that, but... So, you know, there are some committees that we have and some efforts that we have, we just have a really hard time finding people. And I think, you know, when you think about the impacted population in our community, um, they're here, they don't always want to be the ones to have to do the work, you know? And so the folks that aren't having an issue aren't seeing the point, potentially. Yeah, it's very difficult. I do appreciate what you've all been doing and the struggle.
You know, it, it has been, it's, we have, like I said, we have made some progress as far as like, we've got the group formed now, we've got a work plan, um, and, and we're working through some of those, and I think one of the more important things that you just mentioned that, Christina, was um, increasing the, the knowledge of the community about the group and, and having folks coming to public events and that kind of thing. Being able to put information out as to what the, what the P-Cab is. People may not be as, as aware of that as they are the, you know, the planning commission, right? So, um, that's one of the struggles that we're trying to get through, is how do we get that message out there more? And I think we are gonna try to do some, some media stuff here soon, now that we have a president and
Yeah.
Or, or should I say a, a chairperson who's, who's there, so, yeah.
Which, and, and that was also, so, and when you are on the P-Cab, you're elected to a certain timeframe, so we had our previous chair who was, he, he completed his year of service for us and then decided not to renew, so then that change in leadership has been not difficult, but it's just, okay, now, you know, we, I'm the chair and I have to take over the email and like, we're figuring that out. Thank you for bringing up the Facebook, um, social media things that, I'll bring it up at our next meeting, because I don't want to make a decision on my own, that I wonder if there's a way for us to maybe throw a comment, because we do have a general email address that people can reach out to. And people have been reaching out to members and, um, people have come into our meetings as public to be heard to address some things that they, um, want us to know. Some are keeping it anonymous, which I think is a great, that, that's what we're trying to do, is if you want to be anonymous, you can be. So I wonder if bringing it up to the other members of, maybe we, if we see a post like that, we can say, hey, I'm a member of, like, we're really trying to keep some safe boundaries as well, because we, we don't want, we, we just need to keep some lines, not only for ourselves, but we don't want people to think...
Right, you don't want to put yourself in the middle of something that could get heated, obviously.
Right, right, and...
Or put somebody else in that position, right, if they, yeah, it's, it's a tough call to action.
And then I don't want to have to moderate a million comments of people commenting on my, here's the email address, and then like, I don't want to then have to monitor that, especially from maybe my personal account, et cetera. And as I've said, we want to make sure that we are separate from the police department because then nobody will. If, if you have a problem with something, you're not gonna go, and you don't want to talk to them, then why would I talk to a committee? Who is them, you know, so we're really trying to hold that line that we are independent and yet we will, we are liaison in that way. So that's been, and, and I think that's sort of what sometimes slows down our promoting the blog or, you know, posting something easily to Facebook, because we, we want to keep that line, and I really think we've been, we've been good about that, um, and, yeah.
You know, if there's anything we can do, I'd certainly be willing to, you know, when you guys, well, if you want to talk about it, I'm certainly willing to participate in the conversation, but you don't need me, but if there's a way to then promote whatever you come up with.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, whether it's even just dropping in the conversation under our political Facebook accounts, for instance, here's the homepage for the P-Cab. You know, this is a great opportunity to kind of offer input to a quasi-separate
Yeah.
you know, group.
Yeah.
Just leave it at that, you know, and they can, everybody can find a contact on a face, you know, like, I don't know. Or later, when things have calmed down from these conversations, but there's like three or four topics going around right now, they're perennial, some real issues that would be nice if some people, it's always the feeling, right, it would be nice if some people spent a little less time, which is perfectly valid, venting on Facebook and then kind of directed some conversations to some people that can actually help. But I think you're right, it's probably intimidating, reaching out to...
Right, yeah, and that's why we want to try and go to the events more, because it's also hard reaching out to somebody you don't know to talk about something and be vulnerable to say, I've had this interaction with this big system and I'm gonna say something negative about this system in place, um, so.
I've talked to, anybody else, Marcus?
So just to double verify, so there's no current EJ representative on the P-Cab?
Me.
Sorry.
No, that's totally fine. I didn't make that clear. No, it's me.
Okay, great.
Yep.
But for the challenges that you're facing, as far as the bodies are concerned, based on my recollection of the committee makeup, how many people do you think we need and will people solve the problem that you're struggling with to get out, participate? Because as I, as I know from the mission of this particular committee, a lot of this has to do with community engagement. And so while I hear your answer and I totally understand in regards to popping into social media conversations that are about issues in our community that deal with policing, it feels like that's an area that needs to be handled in some way or needs to be, people, somebody from that committee needs to participate in some way.
Right.
Or we need to understand better how that information from those, from listening to those channels, whether, it doesn't matter what it is, at Facebook or otherwise, but listening to those things and then that information is either coming back through you to the police department to gain information insight that can then be shared back or otherwise, so I'm... I guess the simple question is, is it just bodies that will solve this problem? Or are there other things that are required by the committee in order, by the board in order to get this done?
I think, I think bodies is, would be a good first start, just for an example, so, um, for the, um, Halloween pumpkin day, yeah, yeah, the trick-or-treat and the, so I have, um, a previous personal engagement on that day, and I know that, uh, Dan, who's our secretary, he has children, so he might be going on his own. Gwendolyn, I'm not sure if she personally would attend that. I don't know if, um, there would be accessibility met for her in that environment, and then Vince has some family matters that are overwhelming him at the moment, and so he hasn't been attending our last, uh, meeting or two. So out of the four of us currently, nobody, at this moment, maybe when we speak, uh, next week at our meeting, somebody will, like Vince would say, oh, wait, maybe I can do, or, you know, like, I'm guessing right now based on what I know. So I don't think we'll be able to go, and I know that we have a flyer and we'll talk about it at our next, uh, meeting, you know, the chief has had that flyer, but it's at the police department's booth, which is not helpful and...
Can we, can we host that flyer at our booth?
I think we could, for sure.
Yeah.
If not, we
Yeah, okay.
There's other booths there that we can distribute that flyer.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I'd...
That would be, yeah, very helpful, so that's an example.
You know, we could talk to you in advance, one of, whoever, and just kind of, would you like us to say?
Yeah. But so that's just like one example, how having maybe two more members, maybe in this event, somebody could go. And yes, we could have a hundred members and still not reach everybody that we want, and we, I remembered after you said it, we put, I think we put a, like a deadline for the new year for having that survey ready. Um, and I think that will be helpful, just to hear concerns from the masses of, well, hopefully everyone who does the survey. Of, hey, here's my concerns, maybe if nobody would ever be able to reach you, you'll still answer that survey. But at least two more members, I know you, it, it sounds like two more people, what would that really do? But I think going to events is really difficult, even though we have a great variety of people. There are always a variety of reasons why none of us have gone, or maybe Gwendolyn goes, but she can't stay the whole time, or, you know, Vince plans to go and then can't go or whatever, so I think two more people is helpful just for possibilities of going to places. But it's, it, we can't reach everybody, which is why we also want to do the survey too, so.
Great. Anyone else?
Just, if I could, just, just one more thing, I, I wanted to point out two, two things that stand out to me over the last year that have been really positive. Number one is, uh, having the input of the board to be able to, um, bounce things off. We've, we've done some educational things where, uh, when Anthony was the liaison, um, he was, he brought in, I believe, the, um, if I remember them all, the CJC came in at one point.
Yep.
Just some various groups that we deal with. He had a couple of our use of force instructors come in and do, do a little half-hour talk on what use of force is and how we do that here in Vermont.
We had the Howard Center, um, street outreach.
Yeah, yeah, street outreach and community outreach came in, um, so that's been really good. Um, along those same lines, we had, um, Gwendolyn, who came to, came to and completed our police academy, our citizens academy, and she, she really enjoyed that. And then the other thing, the, the other thing I wanted to make, make sure to mention was that, um, we use their members on our hiring boards, um, for promotional, for our promotional boards, um, the last three times. Gwendolyn has been part of that, uh, as far as, uh, promoting a new lieutenant and then promoting our sergeants this last time, so, um, that's been really great to have, to have that, that, that other voice that comes in and gives us that other opinion. So that's been nice not to have to go seek that person out or find someone. We have a, we have a group of people who are already interested, so that's been great.
And, and just on that note, the difficulty of the timing, I've been very interested in doing all these interviews. I love doing that, and it's always been during the school day where I can't take off of work, so that's why having a variety of people available just open up opportunities. If somebody works nights, they can do all the eleven AM things, um, but yeah, I, I really think it took the first year to form the bond. Every month, we had like a foundational, like, here's all about use of force, here's all about the survey that's been done, here's all about all of these different things, so that we could all be on the same page, and I, I feel good that that's all done. And so when we use common vocabulary or refer back to things, we're, we're all on the same page, and now I think we're diving into the work, um, which, yeah, feels so good. Talking about it just reminds you like, wow, we've been doing this for a while and we've been really looking back, making some progress.
That's great. I mean, I think these things take a while to get off the ground. Especially when it requires volunteers. I don't, I don't think we have any more questions, but do please let us know, aside from helping recruit, you know, if there's anything specific we can do.
I was gonna say, I see Annie's hands.
And I wrote down a couple of things I'll follow up with, um, staff with, just a couple of ideas or thoughts that are, probably should percolate a little more about recruiting that maybe we'll reach out after.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you. Do you think that question is?
Yeah, it's probably for us. Regina, did you have anything on this at all or no?
Uh, no, just, um, for the chief, the first item we did is we do have an applicant for the committee.
I did see that on the agenda.
Yeah, um, they just can't attend this time period, so, uh, Marcus and Tim are gonna enter, talk, have a conversation and then bring that recommendation back to the council, so hopefully we can have, have you guys have somebody new soon.
Perfect.
All right, we do, uh, public to be heard. I don't see anyone in, is there anyone in the room that has a comment on this topic? Doesn't appear so, uh, go to the Zoom, Annie Cooper?
Hey, uh, my voice is shot. I hope you guys can hear me. Thank you so much, uh, Chief Hoag, and the rep from Essex Junction, whose name I'm sorry to say I forget. I appreciate your time and the energy you're putting forth. I deeply appreciate, um, Raj, that you came towards a more neutral commentary towards the end, because I came in kind of hot about the remarks you were making earlier, and so I'll cover them more graciously than I maybe would have, if I didn't hear you speak so kindly now. I, I think people get to vent on social media. I think that, um, it's the same as people talking to each other in Hannafords or on the street, and people sharing their frustrations is part of what makes social media good, because more people are able to interact, and especially when we're talking about safety and things that happen. It, it is very valuable to be able to communicate those things. Those things do not necessarily mean that they have to now volunteer for committees, and you know I love a committee, I love committees. But I think we have to be careful to be grateful for the many components that make up a community, and when you are fortunate enough to be elected and represent us at the city council table or work for our city, I think it's really valuable to recognize what it takes to be part of a committee, because you know, because you're doing it, and to not scold or, or, or negate someone's desire to vent frustration and equate that with some kind of necessity that those people must now join a committee. And I want to end with a thank you again to, um, Chief Hoag, and I'm sorry, this one, I remember your interview, and I'm really pleased that you're on the committee and that you're um, speaking for those in Essex Junction while doing so, and I appreciate your time and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Annie. I couldn't disagree with your characterization more, but, you know, I'll move on because I'm sort of used to this. All right, that's the end of public to be heard. Really appreciate you coming.
Thank you, and thank you for offering the flyer and all that, and I'll, I'll reach out.
All right.
We'll talk in our next.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
If you can help.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have my number.
I do.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
All right, we have two executive sessions following this, so, let me find those. I'm assuming you have them up. Oh, yes, we should, yes, you're right. Um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Well, and, yeah, so moved.
Second.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Council member comments and city manager report.
So just want to let folks know, BikeWalk Advisory Committee is partnering with Local Motion. They are auditing the city, um, to figure out where we've got bike parking and where we don't. They'll, will be mapping that out. So if you want to take a moment to fill out that survey, um, that would be great. We do also, uh, we have some bike racks, and so BikeWalk is also working with, um, folks to try to get some more bike racks out there, so that's great. I would like to thank everybody who, uh, came to the Connect the Junction, um, activities we had this past weekend. Appreciate all of that input. There was a presentation on, on Monday night. The way these charrettes work is it's really like a inaction, getting input and trying to sort of digest that out into some ideas, so, um, that's pretty rough when it comes out of the four days, but, uh, there will be a report coming out of that, and then we'll have... Um, that's pretty rough when it comes out of the four days, but, uh, there will be a report coming out of that and then we'll have um, a lot more pieces of actual action items coming out of that work. Uh, so stay tuned for that. Um, also, uh, appreciate, we had good, uh, showing at the Crescent Connector ribbon cutting on, uh, Monday at 10 a.m., so, um, certainly still have some punchless items to work through, including the, getting the timing, uh, I'll, I won't say perfect, the timing improved, uh, on the traffic lights. Um, so more to come there, but, um, really exciting to be able to, uh, celebrate that effort, which is uh, well over 13 years or so plus, if you think about just it being an idea. Um, so also, uh, so folks are aware, there's a new parking lot over there. We've got two EV chargers over in that spot. Um, those are up and operational now, and then we've also got, um, bike lockers, which is a long-term, um, way to store your bike. Uh, we are still working out some of the details of how that will work. Uh, there's some information in the reading file about that. Um, but essentially you can, um, get a key and there's a very small monthly fee to rent those bike lockers. Um, I think that's it.
Great, and it, there was a lot of, um, really good coverage of the, um, uh, transit oriented development project, Connect the Junction, so just appreciate the effort that went into kind of publicizing that. It seemed like there was multiple days and multiple avenues to get that word out, so. That was great. I don't have anything else except, uh, I thought the ribbon cutting went very smoothly and appreciate the effort that went behind that, um, for everybody involved. So thanks.
Yep.
Nothing, all right?
Good.
Now we'll go to the executive session motions.
I move that the city council enter into executive session to discuss a personal evaluation pursuant to 1 VSA 31383 to include the city council.
That's it.
That's it. And then, uh, we have another one here.
Can we do them separately? Because I need to recuse myself.
Yes, let's do this first, right? Uh, great, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, perfect. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and now the second one.
I move that the city council make a specific finding that premature disclosure of the contractual matters would place the city at a subst- a substantial disadvantage. I move that the city council enter into executive session to discuss contract pursuant to 1 VSA 313A1A to include the city council and city manager.
I will be recusing myself from this executive session due to the, um, conflict of interest.
Sounds good. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, so it's four, uh, four ayes and one abstention. Motion passes. So we are in executive session. We do expect to come back at the end, so we will be back out probably before eight. That's the, is the hope, is the plan. Um, so we'll be back, sorry?
We will be.
We will be out before eight, I'm told.
I don't know.
Record.
We have an update on the request, uh, by the Champlain Valley Exposition for additional sound waivers. I'll just read this briefly. Related to, relating to the recent request by CV for an additional 15 sound waivers, the city conducted a community survey and took public comment and learned that residents felt that CV's request for an additional 15 sound waivers should be accompanied by a substantial increase in the contribution that city, that CV provides to the city. As a result, the city entered a negotiation with CV and proposed a financial contribution of $500,000 and that negotiation concluded with CV decided, deciding that they can work within their existing 20 waivers as part of the current agreement. Therefore, no decision is needed at this time. The city plans to review the sound agreement starting in the fall of 2026 in preparation for the next sound agreement as previously planned. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Oh, you didn't. I seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.